Good afternoon, everyone. It is approximately 4:30 PM on Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. And I would like to call to order a public hearing regarding a dangerous property conducted at 1139 Grace Wood Court. Mr. Burning, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Burning. Present, Mr. Honigal.
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
All the trustees are present.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. I would like to note that our law director, Laura Abrams, Director of Infrastructure and Development, Michael Gould, and Director of Administrative Services, Kathleen Kennedy, and our Fire Chief, Rob Lineiger, are also in attendance. The order of this public hearing is as follows. We will begin with opening statements from the township and the property owner or their respective or their representative. Both parties may present their witnesses with an opportunity provided for both sides to cross-examine witnesses. And then there will be closing arguments. Once both parties have presented their cases, the board will either immediately conduct its deliberations and render its decision, or take the matter under consideration for a decision at a later time. Is there anyone in attendance who is representing the property owner of 1139 Grace Wood Court? Please come to the podium. State your name and your address for the record.
My name is Elijah Clark. My address is 1139 Grace Wood Court.
Ms. Abrams, may we please have your opening statement?
Certainly. This hearing is, has been required basically because of the dangerous property resolution passed by the board at the December meeting. It is in relation to a property owned by Mr. Clark and his wife. As you indicated, the address is 1139 Grace Wood Court. The property condition is problematic in that it was destroyed by a fire, has been allowed to remain vacant and in that condition since February 2nd of 2022. By way of background, the board was made aware of this, the owners are currently trying to get the building department to approve plans as to the property. As of today, we received documentation from the building department that the current application has been denied. I don't think we put, did we provide that to the board, Kathleen? I'll make a copy for it, but as the board can see, it's five pages of corrections that have to be done to the plans that are very significant, but that's the status of this building permit for the proposed reconstruction slash renovation of this property.
Laura, when was the fire?
The fire was February 2nd of 2020.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Clark, we're ready for your opening statement if you have one.
Um, I've been at this for, I've been at this, kind of been juggling around a little bit as far as engineering, from an engineering perspective, as far as getting the plans in and getting approved. We were under the understanding that, we thought that we were, the contractor, the engineer who had, was on a plane, who was working the plans, ended up having some health issues and I think lost contact with the person down times we was dealing with, who needed some final, I guess, some changes to the, to the plans to get approved. Once we learned that they were not approved, we resubmitted them. He has, and we're lucky that he, they have denied what he had there and gave him some stuff to resubmit, to get them approved. So that's just what we are working on.
Ms. Abrams, do you have a witness?
Yeah, the first witness will present is Fire Chief Rob Lineiger. You really just swear, ma'am.
Raise your right hand, Chief. You solemnly swear the content of your testimony is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, could you please explain when you first became aware of this property?
Yes, ma'am, I would say. It was on, on the fire that occurred on February the 2nd, 2020. We're coming up on its two-year anniversary. And there was a considerable amount of damage. The fire originated in this, in the second floor bedroom. And it spread to the roof trusses and actually had it, had gone through the roof at that point. We were able to contain the fire to the second floor, but there was substantial water damage to the first floor and lower level, which I'm going to call the basement. It is actually a two-story wood frame structure with a basement. The fire again did substantial damage to the second floor with heavy water and smoke damage to the first floor and basement.
At that point, the property would have been uninhabitable after the fire?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Has anything happened with regard to the property to improve the condition of the property since that time?
No. In fact, typically when we have a structural fire like this where there's considerable damage, we give the property owner approximately six months to try and take care of things with their insurance company. We did not see any movement as far as any type of mitigation to correct hazards or the dangerous conditions of that property. And at that point, then we started contacting the owner and being a little bit more aggressive with our code enforcement at that point. This property does have a history. We've had numerous property maintenance violations as well as nuisance violations that have been issued by our code enforcement officer.
And were those issues resolved, or did they remain open?
They remained open.
All right, did you view the property on October 20th of 21?
Yes, ma'am, I did, with also the code enforcement officer, Captain Mike Stein.
Did you find on that date?
I found the pool to be uncovered. It contained, I might, dark green, almost black water that was in the bottom of the pool, approximately three foot deep. It does have a fence around it, but the fence was partially knocked down. It was not secured. The structure itself, the second floor was removed completely, and it was tarped over, but the tarp had been partially blown off by wind, exposing the first floor to the weather elements. And they also had a tarp that was draped over the rear of the property covering some windows, but again, it was not effective and the wind had blown it partially off and exposing the rear of the property and windows to the weather elements. Weather, windows were broken at that time, and we did find the property unsecured.
Is it possible for people to enter the property at that time?
Yes.
And if they entered, would it be dangerous to them?
Yes, in my opinion, it would be. Although there are no utilities, the electric and gas have been disconnected. However, there are considerable amount of hazards inside, and with the amount of fire damage, there is some question as to whether or not the structural integrity of the building is intact.
At that point, did you issue a memorandum regarding to the declaring it a dangerous property from your perspective?
Yes, I did.
All right, and this was provided to the board previously, but I have the pictures that were taken at that time. Does the board have that in their packet, or is that?
We do.
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone have a paper copy of the original, other than me?
No.
I just wanted to give it to the homeowner if they haven't seen it. I'll go ahead and give these to you. You have it? Okay, if you wouldn't mind.
I didn't own this property until October.
This, this, we have to deal with the condition of the property. It's not, it is not, not any reflection on you, it's just that we have to deal with the condition. So, to that point. So, but that's, those are the pictures of the, of the property condition on October 20th of 21, when the fire chief declared it to be a hazard. At that point, did the board take action?
Yes, they did, at a trustee meeting.
All right. Did they enter a resolution at that point?
Yes.
I believe it was 119, 2021, is that correct?
I do not have that information.
I think that's correct. And they declared the property to be dangerous at that point?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity to view the property at this point?
I have. I've actually been past the property several times also with Captain Mike Stein, but I did visit the property again today and took photographs, if I may submit these two packets of photographs. You'll see three photographs there, one of the front, one of the, of the corner, which you'll view the rear of the property, a rear of the structure, and then also a photograph of the swimming pool. Other than placing a new tarp or a newer tarp over the second floor decking, there has been virtually no change to that property.
I'm sorry, what was the thing that has changed?
The only thing that has changed is it looks like they have applied, they have attached a newer, newer tarp over what would be the first floor ceiling or second floor, floor decking. So it is, it is a flat, flat decking at that point, and they have tried to cover, to minimize the weather, negative weather effects on the property, but it looks like there's a new, newer tarp that's been placed on there. There is an abandoned car appears to be on the property. Nothing's been done to the pool, and I did not check the security of the property. However, it appears as though it was very similar to what I observed in October.
In your mind, as of today, is the property still dangerous, insecure, unsafe, and uninhabitable?
Yes.
That's all I have for the chief.
Mr. Clark, would you like to ask any questions?
Um, we can't, we mean...
There's a que, now's the time for questions. Do you have any, any questions relating to?
For what the chief said.
The testimony that he just gave?
Do you have any problems?
First of all, can you state your name for the record, so you just walked in?
Yes, I'm Brad Legge. I will be the superintendent on the project.
Okay, very good.
Regarding moving forward, sir.
Very good. If you're going to speak, you'll need to be sworn in as well.
Yes. Do you solemnly swear the content of your testimony is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
Our intentions is to rebuild the place. Now, we are fully, you know, wearing the reins. If you want us to board the doors or put some sort of blocks or something on doors, actually, I didn't, we put new doors on that first floor, just keep people out if that is a concern. And we have re-tarp the second floor. What we're doing is waiting on drawings and permits. Right now, as a matter of fact, the engineer talked to Hamilton County this morning. We just got a revision letter. So the drawings are, say, three-quarters of the length. We just have to make a few revisions on it, and we'll be able to start getting our prices for our subs to get the project rolling. What had happened was the engineer that started the drawings, he's a homeowner, he goes and makes those arrangements, but he had a heart attack. He's been late, he's stopped three, four months. He's kind of back now a little bit, but he's got a designer that's picking up for him to do all the revisions. And I spoke with him today.
Can I stop you for a second? Because that's, I'm sorry for interjecting, but let's have you say all that when he's presenting evidence, just to keep us, this, this is just questions as to the condition of the property now from the chief. If you don't have any, you don't have to ask him questions. You'll have an opportunity to say all of that at, when his turn.
I don't know anyways where, but we did take 70 yards of garbage off of that property already. A 40 and 30 yards.
So you have no questions for the chief?
No, not really.
Okay. We have to...
So far, what, you know, what would you definitely want done, you know, this shows our lack, what would you definitely want me to do to the property, you know, to keep it safe until we get our permits started?
That's appropriate.
My main concern at this point is really the security of the property. It is in a residential area that has children. Any type of property like that is considered, in my opinion, an attractive nuisance, and kids can get in there, as well as adults, for that matter. It's an unsupervised property. And so that would be, my biggest concern at this point is really the security of it.
So plywood in the back door and the front would be sufficient, screwed plywood, just until we get rid of the pool?
That is correct, yes. I would accept that.
Can I, can I add something? I mean, I have kids and I have a pool. I would think another thing would be the pool secure, because if there's kids in that neighborhood, they're going to be hanging around that pool, and if they fall in, that's...
There is a small section of fence that's missing.
Right, and I saw the back fence is down a little bit. I would think that...
Well, here's...
If you're minded, repairs, because that fence is a natural...
Well, here's my concern as well with the pool. Now, weather is not conducive to swimming right now. However, I do agree that it can be absolutely that they can play in it. The water itself is almost black. It's dark green, it's almost black. If somebody would fall in there, you wouldn't see it at all. So pump the water out, remove the water, and at that point, then I would feel that that would be sufficient.
Secure the fence, pump the water?
Yes.
It probably covers the pool, so there's no more water in it, right? I mean, you'd probably have to put a tarp or something over it.
Yeah.
Even that fence right there is still tarp, okay.
Do you have any further questions?
Really, I just wanted to make sure I knew what you wanted, you know?
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do you have any questions of Chief Lineiger? Ms. Abrams, do you have any redirect?
I do not.
Ms. Abrams, do you have any addition, so if there's no more questions, you can, well, you can return your seat. Ms. Abrams, do you have any additional witnesses?
Yes, I want to have Mike Gould testify.
Raise your hand. You solemnly swear the content of testimony is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God.
I do.
All right, just to go through this quickly, so we don't spend a lot of time with the, chair wouldn't mind, I'm going to ask these questions in a rather leading fashion, but I have, and confirm if this is correct, if you would, I have that we had the declaration of inhabitability and insecurity and unsafe condition. The chief testified that that was on October 20th. At that point, I have that we had a title search done on December 9th, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, at that point, the board declared it dangerous on December 14th, I believe it was 119, 2021. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, then we had a certified letter mailed with a copy of the resolution to the owner and any lien holders of record, is that correct, on 1215?
That's correct.
Then there was a posting of the resolution and the notice on 1218 on the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, then we ran the legal ad in the community press, was it Community Press or the Cincinnati Inquirer on this one, do you?
Community Press.
And that was on December 28th of 21, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we posted the legal ad on December 29th, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then we had the hearing today, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I also want the, just the record to reflect, I did speak with the homeowners prior to the hearing to let them know what the procedure was. I called them as well, so. All right, on the condition of the property, is there anything else you'd like to add with regard to the nature of the condition?
No, I completely agree with Chief Lineiger's assessment and the way he described it.
Are you concerned with the pool other than the water, or are you...
I, it is my opinion that the pool is structurally deficient. There is a number of areas where the concrete walls are bowed and bulging in. Sections of the paved concrete walkway around the pool have caved in. Some areas have been removed. I can only assume that those were in an attempt to make repairs. The liner within the concrete walls for the pool is failing and is ripped in sections. I don't see, well, certainly the pool is not operable right now, and I think it's going to be a challenge to make it operable in the foreseeable future.
Any other issues with regard to the property?
No, and not, not that wasn't already noted.
All right, did you get, receive the documentation from the building department with regard to the application?
Yes, I did.
Process, did you receive that today?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Honigal, thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, I should have provided additional papers. The advocate indicates you already saw this document, is that correct?
It's all right.
Yeah, okay, all right. Can you just mention some of the concerns they had? Would you like my copy? My, my question is essentially, it seems to me, based on my review, that it's going to take some time to correct, it's how many pages, is that five pages of detailed corrections that need to be done to the application?
That is correct, yes, it's four to five pages here.
And what are the, some of the issues that the building department raised?
Well, there's a number of issues. They're lettered from A all the way to S, and, well, then, and it's numbered again from 2 all the way to 20. Some of the things that stuck out to me, and most importantly, is there's tests that need to be performed on the structural integrity of what's left for the house before anything can be built upon. So as of right this minute, based upon what's written up in here from the Hamilton County Building Department, they're, they're not aware, they're not sure if the proposed improvements can be performed until those tests are completed and results come back.
So they're not sure that it's structurally integrous?
That is correct.
And the proposed reconstruction is not just foundation up, the proposal is to utilize the current first floor, is that correct?
That is correct. Because of the, the fact that the, what's left has been exposed to the elements and was significantly damaged in the fire.
And various assurances need to be done prior to determining whether that can be accomplished or not safely?
That is correct.
Anything else in that letter that was, in your mind, stuck out?
Um, there's, I've seen these reports before. I've never seen one that needs this many revisions. This is significant.
And this is not the first denial on this, these, this permit, am I correct?
That is correct.
Is this the third review or the second review? Do you recall?
Second review.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Clark, do you have any questions, Mr. Gould? Does your representative have any questions?
I have a little question. Have you seen the, the first floor? We planned on redoing the whole second floor of the first floor, because it, it's water damaged, it's all having to be replaced, and we got, we just, you know, we got the drawings ready to go, and once again, it kind of, it sounds like a language on me, which I kind of am, but Billy had that part, I blew that, and so he didn't address the issues. I guess, I don't know what happened, but we just dropped all, and Scott's way on April. So we are addressing it now, and we are making revisions to get things up to date. I would say within two weeks, we should have all the revisions done.
Ms. Abrams, can I say one other thing regarding the security of the property? I was there today, and I recognize that the back door has been breached. So I can only assume to Chief Lineiger's and other concerns that have been echoed already in this hearing, the need for the property to be secured ASAP.
Tomorrow evening, tomorrow afternoon, or...
Do you have any further questions, Mr. Gould?
I have no further questions.
Ms. Abrams, do you have any redirect?
I have no other questions, and I have no other witnesses.
Mr. Clark, do you have any representatives that you would like to call as witnesses? No one wants, do you want to say anything on your behalf? If so, if so, I need to swear you in.
I'm sorry.
If so, I need to swear you in.
He was sworn in.
He was sworn in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think, were you sworn in?
He was.
Okay.
I don't remember. No, he wasn't.
Okay, sorry.
Elijah hasn't ever been involved in building a situation before, that's why I had hired you to carry this. I haven't been able to start it, obviously, because of the engineering situation. Once again, and I will secure the property, we have to, it's hard to defend this. But after that, I really can't do anything until all these revisions and everybody gets approved, but I will secure the property.
Ms. Abrams, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you're not an attorney, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and ask you some questions, because I'm gonna assume what you're doing is testimony. So just, so do you, what is your experience with construction?
I've been reading about framing houses probably every five years.
And you do...
I work for Self-Paying Real Estate right now.
Okay, is that the name of it, or is...
It's the name of the company that I work for.
Okay.
The name of his job, you know, aside.
Okay, so you're not going to do the construction, you're going to get subs?
I will finish work on the interior, all the pantry, trim, and all that kind of tile work, stuff like that. I will sub the framing to a framing contract.
Okay, and is, is it the plan to, to keep the, the first floor as is, or to demolish that and go down to the...
It will be, yes.
Okay, so you would have to demolish that whole first floor?
Yeah, the outside walls will be reconstructed, new wood, new sub floors, and it will look better. See, the, the outside walls are brick, you know, so we...
All right, so you're going to work around the brick, is your intention? Okay.
Yes, we wanted to keep the brick as it matches the neighborhood.
Okay, and who's the engineer working on the, the plans? Is it still?
It's still under building, he had hired another...
Okay, you said...
...drashman, and his name is Jason. He is now...
Okay, do, do you know Jason's last name?
He's... Mike? I have to talk to Mike. Laura, Laura, can you use a mic? Down.
What was that for?
You need to speak here.
Oh, he needs, okay.
I'm sorry.
If you can't find it, if you could just get that for us, I assume he's a licensed engineer?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you could, yeah, if you could get his name, so maybe we could work with him as well. All right?
Absolutely.
Mr. Clark, do you have any questions of your witness as a result of the questions that were asked? Okay, do you have any, any additional witnesses, sir, that you'd like to call other than this gentleman?
I don't know. I can't hear anything.
Okay, so you can have a seat, I'm sorry. Thank you. Ms. Abrams, do you have anything in rebuttal?
I have nothing in rebuttal. I'm ready to move to a slight, a small, short closing statement if...
Okay.
We're working with the property owner on this. There are a lot of issues. I mean, I will say this is longer than I've seen any checklist, and there's a lot of very unprofessional changes that need to be done to this. I mean, there's some notations on, in the permit application that they don't even have the walls in the right place, they don't have, it's not to scale, it's not, and you should, as a homeowner, property owner, be concerned that this report came back this way. So we need to make sure that that goes in correctly, because they're not going to approve it otherwise, so you need to make, you're just going to keep doing this, and we can't allow it to go as long as that would take. So you probably need to get involved in that. But I would say that the property remains the same basic condition as where we were when we declared it dangerous. There's not that much different. And if there were no action taken to try to get permits and try to move forward, I would say it would be completely appropriate for the board to move forward and demolish this property. Typically, and the board is aware of this, when a property owner seems to be making a good faith effort to improve the property and is willing to secure it, the board has typically been willing to give them some period of time to do that. We would typically wait 30 days to demolish anyway from, from the declaration. So I would recommend, as long as the, the permit application is, is put forth in that 30-day period, that we give the homeowner, the property owner, another 30 days after that, so 60 days total to actually see some movement on this. We can enter into an agreement with the property owner, as the board is well aware that we'll stay, the demo, we'll still find it to be dangerous because there's no change. I, I think that's the right determination here. I, I think that's the right determination here. But that will enter into an agreement to give them 30 and 60 days. And, you know, potentially additional time if they're moving forward and the property is secured. But as long as the property is secured in the manner we discussed here, and that no further damage occurs, I think that would be reasonable for the board to do at this point.
Mr. Clark, would you like to present a closing statement to the board?
Yes. I'm just, I actually have to work with me. This is not something I've typically done before.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you at all. Yeah.
This is not something I've, this is my learning curve, so. Working with the engineer, and like I said, originally it was supposed to be like a couple of weeks back to almost secure, to get my plans back. And then, when I got them back to find out that the word, the permit wasn't approved and we couldn't start, it was a little trouble. But, um, I found out what was wrong, what had been happening. So, we're issuing, and trying to go back to it. It's challenging, but I'm, I'm up for the challenge.
As there is no other testimony to be presented, we, as the board, will deliberate.
Well, I mean, to kind of give you my perspective on this, I'm troubled that this has taken, has taken as long as it has. And I did have an opportunity just to review rather quickly the letter from the Building Department. And when Laura Abrams says there are a lot of very basic things that I, I haven't seen your engineering drawings, but apparently, they weren't very good. I know from having submitted a building permit myself to the Hamilton County Building Department this, this week, or excuse me, last week, they were saying they got a three-week turnaround time. So, you need to, if we're going to give you additional time, and we want to see you succeed, not fail, and we really aren't looking to want to tear this property down, but it cannot stay like this. So, this needs to be your number-one priority. If you're going to move forward with this and not have the property, you know, and have the property demolished, then you need to either get with this engineer or another one and say, "I need plans now," and plans that are gonna comply with the Hamilton County Building, you know, with the building codes, so that they can be approved. That's what we're, that's what we're looking for here. And, and I kind of agree, looking at the pictures of the pool, the fence is smashed down, almost clear to the ground in one place, and another place half-down. And that, it is a danger the way it is. This needs to be, this needs to be remedied, as well as securing the property. And I, I've heard from your contractor, that's what, what he's preparing to do. But that needs to happen very quickly. And we, you can't come back here in 60 days and think that we'll give you more time. That's, that's my perspective. I don't know about the other board members. But there needs to be professional plans submitted. This thing needs to get approved. And you need to, you know, give us proof that you have contractors lined up and this thing is ready to go, so that, you know, as soon as, as soon as possible, we're seeing, you know, this place being turned around, because right now, it's a mess.
Well, I would say, in the past, we have, and I failed to say this earlier, in the past, we've required immediate, you know, securing of the property.
Yes.
Even if you give the 30-60, we've done, you know, 48 hours, we've done five days, depending on the, the nature of the danger. So, you can say that, you know, we're not, we're gonna stay the actual demolition of the property, but you have to do these things by this time. So, you can, you can create whatever timeline you'd like for whatever you need to make this property safe.
Yes, Ms. Abrams, that's without, I, I took that as a given, that the securing the property, securing this pool, covering, pumping the water out, covering this pool, those are things you need to do, like, like, you know, she said, the next 24, 48 hours. But we can't let it just keep going on like this.
Joe, I agree with you, but I would also say, I mean, you need to get a structural engineer in there and make sure that it's structurally sound, or else, none of these things can take place if it's not structurally sound to begin with. So, I mean, to me, the, before I get a contractor in there and start looking at what I'm gonna do, I would get a structural engineer to say, "Hey, this property is structurally sound." And then, you go to the contractor and put them in to what they're gonna do to bring the property back up to code. So.
From reading the letter from the Building Department, that's one of the things they have to do when they, to get their permits.
Right, but to do, that needs to be done first, or else, the rest of it's, you know, fixing the plans doesn't help if it's not structurally sound.
Right.
So, my, my biggest concern here is the fact, the close proximity of this property to, to other homes. And the fact that this pool is just, is, it, it, it's clearly dangerous. And my concern is that some small child may wander back there and won't, may not ever be found. It's wide open, it's, there's a lot of debris around the pool and around the property. So, my question to you, how long will it take you to, to remedy just those basic safety concerns? I.e., watching the door, Mr. Gould testified, that was, that was compromised to the property? I'm concerned about a, a child or someone going into that property, or just a person going in, vagrants, living in the property, which is, which is also dangerous. So, how long will it take you to secure that pool and secure the property, the, the door entrance into the property?
I can get it done in two days.
Okay.
I, I couldn't hear.
He said he can get it done in two days.
Two days, okay.
And remind me again, someone, when did we declare this a dangerous?
It was in our last meeting, December meeting.
December meeting? Okay.
December 14th.
Okay, does the board wish to make a decision regarding the dangerous property condition at 1139 Grace Wood Court? If so, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Well, I'm inclined to make, to make a motion for removal of the property, property after allow, the dangerous condition after allowing the owner to secure the property in attempt to obtain a building permit for its rehabilitation. I don't want to give you more time than is necessary. I would say, a building permit in 60 days, and the property has to be secured, and the pool fence, re, you know, the pool fence fixed and the pool pumped out and covered within 48 hours. Is, that, that would be my motion.
So moved.
Well, I think I made the motion.
Seconded.
Mr. Barney?
Aye.
Mr. Honalaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Clark, you understand what our, what the motion is?
48 hours, how the safety issues tend to grow.
And 60 days to have your permit and, you know, be able to move forward. Now, if there's something that, you know, well, that's, that's where, that's gonna be the orders that you're under. I would suggest that the best thing you can do is have good communications with our staff, so that we know where this is. So, it would be a good idea for you to say, "Well, I've, you know, we've had discussions with Jason, our new engineer, and he's gonna have the revised plans done by such and such, and they've been filed with the county. And, and, and they're gonna take us so lo, you know, how they, let us know how long the county says it's gonna take for them to review the plans and, and make a determination." Those are the kind of things you need to be communicating to us. If we just don't hear from you, there, there's gonna be the assumption you're maybe, you're not doing anything. So, that's, that's important. And I do see your.
Now, do I, as far as the engineering and everything, do I send it, or speak to you, Mr. Gould?
You'll speak to Captain Mike Stein in our Code Enforcement Division. You can visit with him or meet with him here at our Administration Building.
We'll get you his phone number. Yeah.
Well, we'll get you, the, the board will pass a resolution at its meeting. Just so we're very clear, that they're declaring that the property is still currently dangerous, and they will order its removal unless you get the building permit in 60 days and you secure this property. So, come 60 days, if we don't have notification that you have the building permit, then within 30 days, they can tear down the property. So, as Mr. Honalaw said, communication is very important here, because if there's some, something that makes them want to stay that further, they'll need to know that by the 60th day, or the process to demolish it will start. So.
And the property has to be secured within 48 hours.
Forty-eight hours.
And so, I want to be clear, and I want Mr. Clark to be clear as to what we mean specifically by the property being secure. I e. the pool being drained, the entrances secured. Is there anything else?
I wanted over windows and doors that are up.
Fence around the pool?
The fence around the pool.
And covering the pool. We'll, we'll put all that in the, in the letter to you, so you'll have it. We'll list it exactly what you need, so you're very clear as to what you need to do. As Mr. Honalaw said, the point is to get this thing resolved and rendered safe. So, we'll, we'll make sure you know exactly what you need. And if you have any questions, you can certainly call Mike Stein, and we'll, we'll get it resolved. But we need, just so you understand the status, it's still a dangerous property. You haven't done anything to render it undangerous. So, the board will have to act on, you know, within 30 days after the 60th day if you don't have the permit. All right?
We would like to see you succeed, not fail at this. But you gotta, this has gotta be a big priority of yours to make it happen. Because we, we have other people in the neighborhood who are like, "Oh, and look at this. This is next to my property." You know, they're, they're unhappy. Thank you very much, Ms. Abrams.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, we would like to begin the matter, a public hearing regarding a dangerous property located at 10225 Hamilton Avenue. Is there anyone present? Do I have to do the roll call for each? Is there anyone present representing 10225 Hamilton Avenue? Please step to the podium. So, would you please state your name?
P. R. A. D. I. K.
Spell your last name for me, sir?
P. R. A. D. I. K.
Ma'am, would you please state your name for the record?
I'm Janelle Travis.
Is it P.E.N.?
J.A.N.E.L.L. Travis.
Janelle Travis.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Abrams, may we please have your opening statement?
Certainly. This case revolves around a property located at 10225 Hamilton Avenue. This is property that has been vacant for approximately 10 years, has numerous property maintenance violations. It, about 10 years ago, the property was struck by a vehicle, and there's some extreme framing damage and structural issues with regard to the property as a result of that. The board has previously seen the pictures and the statement from the fire chief, but nothing has been done as of today, and it is insecure, unsafe, and uninhabitable.
Mr. Travis, Ms. Travis, would you like to give an opening statement?
Uh, well, my thing is, is, okay, when I acquired about this property, it was advertised to me as 10225 Hamilton Avenue, which, that's the building that I was purchasing. And it was 350 a month mortgage. I did that, sent $1,000 down payment, paid my first-month mortgage. Okay? Two years later, my mortgage went up five something. Then, it, it goes up again, suddenly. Which nothing had anything to do with y'all. Okay, but this what it's leading to. I have, didn't know why it was going up so much. Then come to find out, I didn't know we owned this next property that had the structure on it that needed to be demolished. Okay, they told me, "Yes, you own from there, from here clean down to the next road." I didn't even know that. Okay, so then I started trying to keep up over there, cut the grass, keep it clean. Then, next thing I know, a fellow from y'all championship came there and told me to stop and get off the property. He said, "It was gonna be violations, bro, there." And our name didn't show up at all. Okay?
Hey, Mr. Travis, I hate to stop you. It, it sounds like to me you're testifying, and once we get to that, you'll have an opportunity to, to tell us anything regarding the facts of the case and why you were under the impression of, of whatever it was that you were under the impression of. We'll get to that. But right now, we just wanted a basic opening statement. But you'll have an opportunity to tell us whatever it is that it is you want us to know. Okay?
Okay, well, I had been trying to do the best I could, but I had been getting death threats from the previous owners, right in front of the police. And the police were not arresting, let them continue doing it.
We'll, we'll, we'll hear all that in a second. I don't mean to cut you off, but there's a process that we have to go through, and, and I, I promise you.
You asked me what I, what you want to hear.
Yes, I asked you to give an opening statement. But we're gonna go back to Ms. Abrams, and Ms. Abrams is gonna call her first witness. And then, I promise you, I'll get back to you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Abrams?
All right, I will call the fire chief, Chief Lineger. Let me just swear him in.
Yes. You saw me swear the content of your testimony is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God.
All right, chief, you're also familiar with this property at 10225 Hamilton Avenue, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, I have a note indicating that on October 20th of 2021, that you visited that property for the purpose of determining whether it was safe or secure. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and what happened when you visited the property on that day?
Well, first of all, I am very familiar with this property. Actually, I was on, responded to the accident where the gentleman had actually ran his car into the building, and that was approximately 10-plus years ago. Fortunately, there were no injuries, but there was some fairly substantial property damage at that time. We had thought the, the property owners were going to repair it. But this has been a, an ongoing struggle for really well over 10 years to try and get this damage repaired. When I visited on, in October, the, the property continues. When I visited on, in October, uh, the, the property continues to show deterioration. Uh, it's been neglected, uh, it's been unoccupied for 10-plus years. Uh, the, the windows are open, exposing the property to weather elements and, uh, all types of rodents and, uh, I'll kind of, I'm going to say critters, but type things can have access to that type of property. Um, so basically, it's just, it's just been neglected for 10 years. As a result, utilities have been disconnected, it's uninhabitable, there is no plumbing, water, electric or gas, and it's just been basically sitting there, um, deteriorated all this time. So, um, my biggest concern at this point, again, is a security concern, uh, people having access to it. Um, it is unsecured, um, or it can be easily accessed. Uh, when I say secure, you, it could be, a door could be, um, uh, pushed in, there are broken windows and so on. So, um, that is my biggest concern, is really just access at this point.
Well, you say that, you're also saying that because you think it's not safe to be in the property.
That is correct, yes, yes. Because of the, the weather elements, and because, actually because of the initial damage to the structure that occurred well over 10 years ago. Um, there was substantial damage to the frame of that structure. Uh, that is a wood frame structure, it's on a block foundation, and the block and the framing, um, were damaged. And it has never been repaired, uh, post that accident.
And your concern is that makes a structural problem as well?
Uh, that is my concern. I'm not a structural engineer, but I can recognize substantial property damage, and this case it is, that's correct.
All right. And you issued a report on October 20th to the board?
Yes.
As to the condition? And you determined that you felt that this was a, a dangerous property condition at that time?
Yes.
I believe the board has that in the computerized version of the packet. Mr. Boole, do you have a copy that we can give the witnesses, so that they have it as well, and I'm sure they've seen it? What I'm having him give you is just the pictures that we took on October 20th of '21 showing the condition of the property, just so you can see, in case you want to contest that for any reason. Chief Lineger, did you have an opportunity to review the property status, condition today?
I did. I visited the property this afternoon, at which time I did take updated photographs. I have two photographs here. More? And what the pictures show is, in comparison with previous photographs submitted, that, that there has been virtually no change to the property.
No work's been done, no further securing of the property?
That's correct.
And I assume that because of that, you maintain your position and your determination that this property is dangerous property, it's unsecure, actually defective, and uninhabitable, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's all the questions I have.
Mr. Travis, Ms. Travis, do you have any questions of Chief Lineger as a result of what he just stated, what he just testified to you? Do you have any questions for him?
Well, I don't have any questions, I've got a comment.
Okay, okay, no, no comment quite yet.
You'll get your time.
We'll give you time.
All right, I have no, obviously no rebuttal. I'll call my second witness, which is, uh, Mr. Boole.
Do you saw me swear the content of your testimony is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
I do.
All right, Mr. Boole, we're going to go through the same process as before. Um, the, I indicate that after we had the October 20th, '21 declaration by the fire chief, we had a title search completed on, uh, 12 December 9th of '21, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that the board declared this property to be dangerous on December 14th of '21, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that we then mailed a certified mail letter with a copy of the resolution to the, the property owner and the lien holders of record on December 15th, is that correct?
That's correct.
That we posted the resolution and the notice on the property on December 18th, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the legal ad on December 28th of '21 stated that the hearing would be held, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we posted that legal ad on December 29th, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Were you also able to view the condition of this property?
Yes, I was.
Do you have any other comments other than what the fire chief stated?
I completely agree with Chief Lineger's assessment. If you're looking through his report, um, there's a photo that the same side of the structure where the accident occurred, and if you look at the bottom part where the block foundation is, you can see where the foundation of the house was compromised, whether that's as a result of the accident or because of just the extended period of time that the house has sat open and could be weathered. Um, so I would agree, while I'm not a structural engineer, it, it is structurally deficient, in my opinion, it needs to come down. It is definitely a hazard to the community.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Travis, Ms. Travis, do you have any questions of Michael? No questions?
I have no further witnesses.
Okay. Do you have any further witnesses?
I have no further witnesses.
Uh, Mr. Travis, Ms. Travis, do you have any witnesses that you would like to call to testify on your behalf? Either you can testify, or Mrs. Travis, you can testify. Would either of you like to testify?
Who, what?
Just, just tell it...
Oh, I'm not...
Correct. Yeah, you can tell us whatever it is you want to tell us, but I need to swear you in. Okay? Just raise your right hand or whichever hand that you have available. Do you saw me swear the content of your testimony is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God? Thank you. You have the floor.
Okay, I don't disagree with what he just said, okay? This damage I was done to the house, I came back to this property in 2011, October. It was done before I came there. Okay? And I've been trying to do everything I could to go along with everything I was asked. I know, and I don't know what to do to a dangerous property. Okay? I just, I agree that it probably needs to be tore down. But my thing here at the point is, with my income and what this property is costing me and what I am paying, these need roughly a hundred dollars a month. And so it would have to be a very cheap job or put on payment. But another thing I wanted to say, I had a fire came to my house, and he questioned me about the house. He said, would you be interested in donating to the fire department? I told him I had no problem with that. Okay, I told him, but I couldn't give him an okay on it, because I didn't know what I could do about the property. Okay, so he supposed to been coming back, he supposed to been bringing, I thought it was to burn me off, but I never heard back from him. But he said that they would take care of demolition once they finish the training. Okay, so, tell nobody.
Okay, I just swear you, I need to swear you in, ma'am, because you... Okay, do you saw me swear the content of your testimony is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, no, um, what we're saying here is, um, we didn't know a lot of stuff that we know now. Uh, uh, I got the pictures to show here, but they was giving us, they was giving us letters saying that the grass was high and things like that. The, the previous owner, Ms. Karen, I just found out her name too. All of this we just finding out, like, in the last few months. But anyway, they was sending us letters, but Ms. Karen was coming there, when we first moved there, they were still coming into this house, cutting grass, doing things, and our electricity was connected to this house. But we bought 10225 Hamilton Avenue, not 1021, 102... See, we bought 102225, so we, we weren't concerned about that area over there.
10225 is a, is a property question?
Both properties, it, just to, I just looked it up in the auditor's office, both properties, the one they live in and the one next door, both 10225 per auditor records. When they bought their property, they had five parcels. Their property's on one, there's three vacant parcels, and this house is on another. So there's five parcels they bought it, and this is one of them, but what they're saying is they didn't know they owned this, even though they...
Ms. Karen was still coming here using the house, okay?
And...
Yeah, yeah, all of it. Yeah, and then Springfield Township was staying off the property, so we did that. But we did, but when she, when I called the police on her, um, she threatened me saying that that was her house. And I'm thinking like, well, okay, lady, best business is, she wanted to get contents out of the house. She and her five or six cars of people was in and out the house, destroying it, doing whatever it is that they do. Okay, so we went on here, and when I called the police on them, um, these letters show here where, uh, we got the letter for the clogged grass, so we just start cutting grass. And Ms. Karen got, when she moneyed out the house, she left. Then, when we found out this, another partner, another lady from, uh, from somewhere down south took, took them to court, and she got the money from the house, which is the lawyer's name and, and, uh, the lawyer's name and the time of the hearing. And, uh, what, what Ms. Karen said is she got the house and, and, and the, this, a lawyer told me that she got the money from the house, and then she just left down. She went to Florida.
Now, it's right.
But when she came back, we had, we had bought the house, but we didn't even know about the 10221 until, uh, this letter came in Ms. Karen's name saying that she's the shareholder. This letter said Ms. Karen is the shareholder of that house, 10221. And then when we got our letter from the people that was paying the mortgage, they were telling us about the property like this. So this whole time until the party told us about the, the property, and we didn't even know the history of that. We didn't, because we didn't have a concern for that house. We lived at 10225, that's 10221. So now everybody is seeing, well, we're responsible for the house, when Ms. Karen got the money, and this other lady from south, with the lawyer's name on it, uh, she got her money from the house.
It was a big deal.
And it was a big loan taken out on that house, and they got the money, and they gave you anything but none of it. Here you go. Here I go, they took it out. With Ms. Karen's name on there, saying that she is shareholder.
This is for foreclosure.
Okay, foreclosure, I understand that.
Was this on your house, or was this on the house next door?
That was on the house next door. We didn't have anything to do with it. That's when they told us to stay off the property.
But did the house go to foreclosure?
I don't know, we didn't even go to that. That, that lawyer's name was on there.
You lost in that package. This is a foreclosure, and when I reported the sheriff, this is the announced foreclosure.
That's what we spoke about.
It was June 27th, 2019.
But then they came back to say...
12/25, and the auditor has both properties.
Well, not a perfect...
225. And there was no change in ownership, so it didn't go to foreclosure.
Well, Ms. Karen's name is on this, this is the shareholder.
She, uh, she got a one owner property that's flawed, she had owned it.
Well, I know she fraud, she right up the street, but she threatened my family. If we, if we, if they can't even, yeah, well, maybe up the street, she is strictly a predator.
Obviously.
And I'm terrified because I don't want them to come down there and kill all of them. She said that, and tried it, we talked.
Was that our police officer, or was it the city of Cincinnati?
No.
Was it Springfield Township or the city of Cincinnati?
My shit, my appearance. And he left...
Oh, it was a sheriff?
He was walking out.
Well, he just said it was a sheriff, that's different.
She left, and she left...
It was a sheriff's office.
They came from up each street. She, but he got him, everything she...
I just want to, this is just amazing.
Before we go too far, Phil, if I may ask a question?
Yes.
Um, can, can I, do you own the house or do you lease the house? Did you buy it?
10225, we were purchasing it.
I'm sorry, you, you purchased that?
Not yet, but we're paying off.
Which one, which one is this? I know it says 10225.
It says 10225.
I know, but they, there's two houses under that address.
Right, there's two houses, the auditor has both under that same address.
So which one is...
This is the one...
Can I see the letter from Ms. Karen?
The one that, the one that's...
They agreed to see that now.
Dangerous is not the house you live in.
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys are talking about...
And we thought it was our house, because the letter said 10225.
Right, I, I get it now.
And we learned somebody else had the property.
So what do you have, a land contract?
Yes.
You have a land contract, so you don't own the property?
No, that's correct. You're, what is the Orchid Trust number one?
Now, there's a change in four times, that's the first person that we, the second people that took the, took it over, the mortgage.
They're leasing the house, yeah.
They're leasing it. This, not this, not that house. Different, that's the one.
You're always saying the bank owns it, or something, the bank is in law, not what we were told.
Well, it hasn't actually closed the foreclosure of these parcels.
Still showing Orchid Trust owned today on the Hamilton County Auditor's website. Well, it takes time to go through foreclosure, so it might just not have happened yet.
All right, so let me just say, she, she, one of the documents she provided dated January 6th of 2022, um, is, indicates that she has a land contract for the property, um, and that it is, includes five parcels. So it is what we said, it includes the five parcels. Says one of your parcels is a structure located at 10221, which is set for demolition in the near future. So they, they think it's 10, I don't know, yeah, they think it's 10221. But, but their land contract does include all of those, so... When did you, when did you sign the land contract? How long have you been there?
You said 2011.
October of 2011.
All right, well, then you have an interest in the property. All right. And I think, it's an unusual circumstance, but I don't think that affects what we're doing here. My recollection of your testimony was that you don't dispute that this is a dangerous property on the other parcel.
We don't, yeah, it's been now.
So your, your, your concern is that you're responsible for something you didn't know that you're responsible for? So, so let me ask you, is there, do you have any intention to fix that property or demolish it yourself?
Uh, no. I would, I would, it's not a big...
All right, so I, I think we can, I mean, what, what will happen here is, we've already declared it dangerous, you don't dispute it's dangerous, you don't want to fix it, so the board will fix it, I mean, they'll, they may, the board has the option, to declare it dangerous, again, to confirm that it's dangerous, at which point they'll give you an opportunity to fix the property or demolish it yourself. You're saying you don't want to do that. After 30 days from the time they notify you that, then they will. Unfortunately, the costs of doing that are going to be put as a lien on the property, so it is going to be added to the taxes, but that's the only way to resolve the situation. So you might...
But I don't have a legal policy for this house.
Yes.
Ms. Karen was planning on you to elect her.
Yeah.
All of that.
So you, you're, you may want to contact whoever the owner is of the land contract, this Prime America or whoever, and have Allied Servicing Corp have some conversations with them, um, but that's, that's the process for this, and we can't resolve that issue for you, unfortunately, but that's, that's the problem.
But you still use it on that, like, she still sit in there till I have it. And I'm just terrified of the woman. And she said that's a part of the week, she's doing it. But, okay, well, let's, let's get it tore down, huh? Whatever we have to do, you know, we don't have the money to do this.
That's, that's what I'm hearing, is you're saying it needs to be torn down anyway. Yes, okay. But you don't have the money to do it, okay?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I can't...
Okay, all right. I think we have kind of a clear idea of what we need to do then.
I think so too.
Okay.
Are there any further questions?
I have no further questions.
I have none.
All right, so the, the board will deliberate on this matter.
Well, I, I would just say, based on the testimony here, and it's taken me a little bit to kind of sort, try to sort this out, but this isn't the actual house you live in, and it's, it's adjacent to your house, and you don't dispute it's dangerous, and
it's, it's adjacent to your house, and you don't dispute it's dangerous, and you're, you're okay with it being tore down.
Yeah.
And so, I guess I would say I'm leaning towards making a motion that we, while, you know, we have a motion for, would it be immediate tear down?
Yeah, just declare it a continuous.
It's, declared a continuously dangerous property, and we would move forward with the process of having the dangerous property torn down.
Is it legal that this character gets the money from her and don't fix it, and then wait, is that legal, can she do that?
Well, that's way outside of this hearing, I don't know all the facts on that to know what, I couldn't really answer that intelligently.
But it is your property, and they, no one has the right to go on it, so.
Well, she actually owns it, doesn't she, still?
No.
It's in land contract?
No, it's in the land contract to us.
They're in California.
Yeah, it's a trust.
So we, we're acting on the screen, we're just gonna go on there. So we, one more step, so there's a motion on the floor?
Seconded.
Mr. Bernie?
Mr. Bernie? Aye. Mr. Hahnlaw?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
The motion carries.
So I think he's asking what's gonna happen. The, the next step will be for the township to take the legal actions to have the structure torn down. So we're gonna get, we're gonna, it's gonna go away, we're gonna bring in, you know, a crew that'll tear the thing down, and, and that sounds like the best outcome in this particular circumstance. Now, the cost of that will get assessed to the property, that's the law, but there's nothing we can do about that.
And you'll get a letter in the mail that says that's gonna happen, so don't be surprised when you get it saying.
The amount of all of that?
Um, we won't have the amount at the time until it's just, until the, actually the contractor takes it down.
And you talk from your, of the, of the.
Yeah, the, the information, there'll be a letter from you telling you that we passed the resolution, you'll get a copy of the resolution, and, and we'll tell you that it'll be torn down within 30 days.
Okay.
If you have any questions, you're welcome to call.
Okay.
So, all right, we wish you good luck.
Come in, good luck to you. Okay. With that, the public hearing for 10025 Hamilton Avenue is now closed, and we will begin our regular trustee meeting that was supposed to start at 5:30.